Good morning, welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, August 15th, 2012. We're here in the Commissioners Boardroom. I haven't done this actually since we've been over here, so this is a little bit interesting. Commissioners Boardroom at, where are we? 1115 Commercial Street Northeast here in Salem. We will begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you would join us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So I just got back from vacation last night, and Commissioner Milne, I'm assuming, is on vacation today, is that right?
She is, I've been kinda running things, nothing too bad happened.
I'm glad things didn't fall apart in my absence, so this is good news. We always begin our meeting with public comment, and there is no one signed up here to speak today, but want to invite the public, if you are so inclined, to come down. We have an open forum every Wednesday morning at 9:00 AM here at the Commissioners Boardroom, 1115 Commercial Street Northeast here in Salem. So next we will move to the Consent Calendar.
All right, Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the Consent Calendar this morning, and on it, under Board of Commissioners, we approve two resolutions authorizing Titles 1, 2, and 3, percentage allocation under the Secure Rule Schools and Community Self-Determined Act as extended for 2012. Business Services, Human Resources, approve a recommendation to reclassify Position 1972 from Management Analyst 1 to Management Analyst 2 in the Sheriff's Office. Health, approve Amendment 2 that adds $20,000 to the contract with DePaul Industries Security to provide security service for the county's methadone program through June 31st, 2013. Information Technology, approve renewal of maintenance contract with Tyler Technologies Incorporated for $131,992 for the existing assessment and taxation system. Public Works, notification of bid award of $1,462,717 to North Saniam Paving Company for the North Fork Overlay Pavement Project. Approve renewal of a 10-year contract with Valley Landfills to accept municipal solid waste incinerator ashes, landfill alternate daily covered in annual cost of $1 million. And approve renewal of a grant of $125,982 to Salem Kaiser School District to fund an educator for the district's recycling and solid waste management education program for fiscal year 2012/13. Public Works, receive planning commission decision approving a subdivision, that's been rare, S U B 1201, Red Sim LLC Clerks File 5671. Sheriff, approve renewal of a contract for $129,395 with Bridgeway Recovery Services to provide evidence-based services for adult offenders under the supervision of Marion County Sheriff's Office Proel and Probation Division.
I'll second the motion, and I just had one question here as I was looking through. So the agenda says that this information technology contract is for $131,992, which is the total charge amount on the contract, but the write-up says that it's a maximum of $143,132, so just wanted to make sure that we were correctly stating what we're approving. I imagine there's a part for contingency in it that maybe didn't get reflected in the budget.
I'm sure the actual client support-
Chuck in the microphone, Claire.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you. Madam Chair, the actual client support and software update services agreement in your binder does show a total charge of $131,992. So it may be that the cover sheet is in error.
All right, so-
We could take it off or make the larger amount up too, include that in the motion.
What would you recommend, Gloria? That we do the higher amount, or that we do the lower? Would we need to bring it back if we stated it incorrectly? The contract itself is not in the notebook, so. There's just the, well, I guess it's just a small agreement, right?
Right, it's that, it's the services agreement that actually details the cost out there.
Okay. Well, why don't we keep it at the amount that it states, and if there's a need for us to go back and review it at the higher amount, we can bring it back.
Right, the stated amount does appear to be the correct amount from the paperwork-
Right, yeah, it did too, I just was a little bit confused because of what I saw on the agenda review.
I'll verify that with contracts following the meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, any further discussion on these items? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, all of those items are approved. We have two items under action today, both of them are ratifications of collective bargaining contracts, so they're under Business Services Risk Management, and the first is to consider ratification of the Marion County Juvenile Employee Association Collective Bargaining Agreement effective July 2012. It doesn't have a date through June 30th, 2014, I'm sure you'll clarify that for us. We have Gary Rabello and Fay Fagel here, so if you would come on up and walk us through what it is that we are ratifying today. Fay, come on up. Yes, of course I want you to come, you can't sit on the sidelines. Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, what we have before the Commissioners is a request to approve the Marion County Juvenile Employees Association Collective Bargaining Agreement that runs July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2014. The contract has 28 members, the members have, the union has met and ratified the contract with a vote of, I think, 28 to 0, which is the full complement of the members. Let me just kinda go over the economics a little bit, from wages, we did a-
Gary, would you mind pulling the microphone just a little bit closer so that we can hear you a bit better?
Sure.
Thank you.
From a wage standpoint, what was, what the bargaining group agreed to was a 1.5% market adjustment in year 1, July 1st, and a 1.5% July 1st, and 1.5% July 1st of 2013. And this is to correct a market position, group workers were out of market more than 5%, and this change will bring them back into market. From a health standpoint, the agreement is that we would not adjust the cap, the current cap is 1346 is the county contribution, and that cap remains in place for the two-year life of the agreement. The only caveat there is there is a Me Too clause that if M C E A gets, receives an increase to the cap, that M C J E A would receive that same cap. Probably the only other real thing of significance was a lot of discussion around shift trades, and we've entered into a letter of agreement trial period for shift trades that really documents how shift trades can happen, and what conditions and what rules, and the intent of the shift trades is really, the union has made a commitment that they believe shift trades will increase sick leave balances. So we will monitor that over the course of the trial period, there's no requirement that we continue that, and Fay, I don't know if you have any other comments on the shift trade piece? Okay. Other than that, it was language cleanup, some clarifying language, but that's really, I think, the bulk of what the changes are.
So I'm gonna take us back to the very beginning, all right? So we have a contract in front of us with the Marion County Juvenile Employees Association. So Fay, tell us who is in the Marion County Employees, Juvenile Employees Association?
Yes, thank you. The members of that, of M C J E A are our group worker staff. We have two classifications within that, group worker 2 and group worker 3. There are very few group worker 3s, the majority are group worker 2, and all of those staff are employed with our detention facility and in our shelter care facility. I think it's also important to note that they are non-striivable, a non-striivable union.
Okay, so, right, they can't strike?
Correct.
Strike prohibited, I think they call it.
Correct.
Right, so we have two classifications essentially in that particular bargaining unit, and all of these folks are shift workers essentially, right? That work with juveniles when they're brought into the detention facility or into shelter and need help, and so they're the ones that are, they're with them to-
24 hours a day.
24 hours a day to make sure their needs are met while they're in the custody of Marion County.
Correct.
Okay, so what else, this is a fairly recently organized collective bargaining unit, right? I think this is, they had, they organized and they had a contract, and this is the first time that we revised the contract, is that correct?
No, I think, I would have to check, I think this is the third.
Third time?
I think this is the third contract that we've entered into.
Okay. Time flies then, huh?
Yeah, so I think this is your five, correct?
I think so.
Your five of the-
Your five, all right. So then Gary, there's 41 pages here in this contract, and so there are lots and lots of, I mean, it just basically sets out all of the provisions, it recognizes the association, talks about hours of work, rest periods, lunch breaks, holidays, vacation leave, sick leave, health and welfare, overtime, travel allowances, health and safety regulations, I'm just reading from the titles of these. So what you're essentially saying is that there were no major changes to the lion's share of those different articles in there, there was perhaps clarifying language put in, language that might have been aligning what is in the contract with either what Marion County's practice is, or what the law requires, so is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that's correct. Some of it was, you know, making it a little bit more generic, so I'm using sort of job titles like human resource supervisor, we use human resources, getting rid of some language like he/she kind of language, making sure the language was in the proper place in the contract, that type of stuff. So, yeah, out of all those articles, 14 were approved as current contract language with no changes at all. Some others were, had minor changes, and then we had a handful of changes, articles that went to mediation or resolved at that point.
And I have been reading the M C E A contract in the he/she part, now that you're bringing it up, I want to have some discussion offline about that, because I don't think it's grammatically correct to say "an employee" and "they," it doesn't line up, so.
And Commissioner, I was also looking at the personnel rules and wanting to make sure that we were consistent with the language in the personnel rules and the language within the contract.
And L G P I-
What does L G P I stand for?
Local Government Personnel Institute, I believe.
Thank you.
And they had done an audit of all of our contracts and had made some recommendations to bring them into a little bit more alignment and consistency, so where we could do that with this contract, we tried to do that as well.
So those are kind of the technical parts of the process, that you go through and article by article, and then sign off on mild or very small language changes to those. So then, really then it focuses in on the two articles that the employees were most concerned about, and one was healthcare and the other was salary.
Correct.
So on healthcare, what I heard you say is that we have a, we have a cap in Marion County, and it's $1,346 per employee per month, right, is the cap?
Correct.
So that's what we're currently spending, and I'm recalling when I started at Marion County, it was under $1,000, I think, it was, and I was thinking it was a lot of money then. So healthcare costs have dramatically increased, and we have a group called H I S C, the Health Insurance Study Committee, is that what that stands for?
Correct.
Management and labor that work together to advise the Board and the Budget Committee on healthcare, and so under H I S C, I think the county's done a really good job of revamping the plan to be able, because I think the first few years I was here, we had 17% increases, and one year I think it was almost 30%, I mean, there were humongous increases in terms of the costs of the plan that Marion County had then. So we have made adjustments in the plan, but we have also adjusted the cap upwards as healthcare costs have increased. So could you describe, Gary, kind of what the healthcare situation looks like for the next year, because I think we just got some information on that within the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, for 2013, it's actually very positive. We went out to bid with our health plan and had a number of quotes from healthcare providers, and our current healthcare provider, which is O D S, actually came in with a rate reduction of over 5%. Initially Kaiser, our other carrier, came in with just under a 1% increase, but after looking at what the other provider was doing, they made a management decision to also reduce their rates as well. So basically, all the rates will go down. That puts the 1346 that the county is putting in will cover all of the premium except for a Kaiser-Kaiser option. So if you're on Kaiser-Kaiser, the employees will pay $5.25 a month, all of their plans will be no out-of-pocket on the premium for employees.
Right, so that's fully covered-
Very, very positive.
Fully covered premiums for the health plan, which really, most other organizations, whether they be government or private sector, don't have that, so Marion County employees are very fortunate that we do have that. And when you mentioned Kaiser-Kaiser, that would be Kaiser Medical and Kaiser Dental, but if you had Kaiser Medical and, for example, O D S Dental, the premium would be fully covered?
Yes.
Okay, so the Me Too clause, could you explain, you've kinda went over that really quickly, what does that mean?
Sure. What we wanted to do was negotiate with M C J E A that we would maintain that cap of 1346 for the life of the contract for those two years, so, and as we just mentioned, in year 1, it's not going to be an issue, but we don't know what year 2 is going to be. They agreed to hold the cap at 1346, but said that if M C E A was able to negotiate a cap increase, that we would need to give them that same cap increase, and that seemed like a reasonable request, and so we agreed that no cap increase unless another bargaining unit is able to negotiate an increase.
And we're still in the midst of negotiating the M C E A contract.
With M C E A, we are.
Now, the one other point I wanted to make before we move to salary is that the contract, as you mentioned, goes, it's two years, right, and it goes from July 1st to June 30th in a two-year period. The healthcare contracts are January through December.
Calendar year.
So we're currently under, from July through this December, we're under the rate that started last January, so people under the contract wouldn't see any increase in their healthcare than they have now, because we're in the midst, we're in the second half of the year. Then this new contract that you just described where there's no increase, in fact, there's a reduction on one of them, that's from January through December, so that would leave just six months really of kind of the Me Too issue, right? Because we don't know what the increases might look like from January through June of 2013, am I in the correct year?
Yes, that's correctly stated.
Right, okay. So then, moving on to the salary, you mentioned that it was a 1.5% market adjustment, so it's a market adjustment to just the two positions that are in the bargaining unit, the group worker 1 and group worker 2?
Correct.
Is that correct?
No, I'm sorry, it's group worker 2 and group worker 3.
Group worker 2 and group worker 3, okay. So describe what a market adjustment is, it's not the same as a cost of living allowance, right, or COLA as they call it, it's a different process, and I believe there's a statute that actually governs how government does market adjustments, is that right?
To a degree, it really, the statute really is for, and in this case, it does apply because the statute is for strike prohibited groups, and it basically outlines what you need to look at in terms of comparables, in terms of wages, so for that statute, our comparables are for other counties that are similar in size to us from a population standpoint. That would be Deschutes, Jackson, Lane, and Clackamas. And so what we do is go out and look at what those four counties are paying for comparable jobs, so we could go out and look at what they're paying for group workers in a juvenile facility, take a look at that market data, compare our market, our rate to that market rate, and in this case, they fell behind, they were behind market by about 6.5%, so we felt that to stay competitive, we wanted, did want to do an increase in order to get them back into a reasonable market position, and we settled on the 1.5 and 1.5 to get them back into market.
Okay, so let me just back up a little bit on this, so we have a statute, and because they're strike prohibited, we have a process in Marion County that, and I think it's every five years, is that what our process is?
We put it on a five-year cycle.
Right.
We also double-check it going into bargaining to see where the bargaining positions are.
Right, so we review these positions, and we've had a practice of saying that when we take a look at these comparator counties, you call them, so counties that are of similar size, and Lane County's probably the closest to Marion County in terms of actual population size, but, and Clackamas is bigger, and then Jackson and Deschutes are smaller, but they're kind of in the, in the same area, and so we take a look, and then, of course, cost of living is different in different places in the state, so it's not an exact science, but it's what, how the statute has asked us to look at it. So we take a look at those comparator counties, and then try to find positions that are the same or as close as possible, right? And I know a little bit about this, because we go through this with the Budget Committee every year for the Board of Commissioners, the other elected officials, we see our comparator counties. So you compare salary, you compare healthcare, right?
No, this, we're just comparing salary.
Okay, just salary, so you compare salary, but I know there's other factors in there, so there's, oh, I know what it is, whether you pick up the PERS or not, retirement.
And all four of those counties pick up the PERS, so we're just looking at salary, because the PERS is consistent across all four counties.
Okay, but tell me, I want to know the factors, I'm talking generally now, not just for this particular group, but generally, when you do the comparator counties, you look at salary, which includes the PERS, and also includes what else? Because I know there were like about four or five boxes on that sheet that took a look at.
We'd look at it differently for the elected officials, for employees, we're just looking at salary.
Okay, so you don't look at anything else when you do the market adjustment?
We do not.
Now, the handouts that we had actually had other factors on there, so I'm gonna argue with you a little bit here on that. All right, so I know that they look at the base salary-
Look at the base rate.
But there was also another rate on the sheet that you took a look at, and what does that include?
I'm sorry, I, for these positions, we're only looking at base rate, I don't know what else to tell you.
Okay, well, all right. I'll check in with you on that offline then afterwards, because I do recall that there were other factors that were on the sheet.
On the elected officials, there may be.
Well, I know there are on the elected officials, for sure, I mean, they look at whether there's a travel allowance, they look at, the compensation credits were always included in terms of the amount of additional salary that were on there for the, for the amount of comp credits.
If you're talking about the department heads, I did cut the department heads two different ways, so I looked at base, and then I looked at base plus retirement.
Uh-huh.
So the 401K, the 7.5%, and PERS compared to the other counties.
Right.
If you're looking at department heads, that's what I did for department heads.
Okay.
But for our normal employee market reviews, we're only looking at base.
Okay, all right, it might have been the department head that I was looking at-
That could be.
For the business services one, when we, when we just did that, because I remember there were like two lines on that.
That's, you're talking about the department heads, and-
Right, okay.
I wanted the Commissioners to see both a total comp type and a base, but for our normal five-year cycle employee market reviews, we're looking at base pay.
Okay, so let me ask you a question then, so compensation credits aren't looked at at all?
No, we look at the rate that includes the comp credits.
Okay, so the comp credits are actually folded into the rate?
Folded into the rates, yes.
All right, and for newer employees, the compensation credits-
Are in the base.
Are in the base, and for employees that were after, I can't remember the year, it was several years ago?
Right.
Okay.
They have the option to, they can opt out of those comp credits and get the higher base, or they can keep those comp credits.
Right, okay, so there is a factoring of comp credits, though, in the salary, when you're reviewing?
When we review the salary to market, we're including the pay range that includes comp credits.
Okay, now, if all of the comparator counties didn't pick up the PERS, would you consider that?
I would like to, yes.
Okay, all right, but because they all do, you just figured it was even, and so you didn't need to do that?
Correct.
Okay, so, so then, the salary that you look at then needs to be either within a 5% above or 5% below, so if it's 5%, if it's within 5% above, we don't reduce anybody's salary, if it's within 5% below, we don't usually look at adjusting it until it's outside of that, is that correct?
That's our guideline, yes.
All right, so now, now to the specifics of this one, so where were these employees then when you were looking at the rate in the market study?
They were about 6.5% behind.
Okay, 6.5%. So when we adjusted up to, by 1.5% the first year, that brings them right to 5% below?
Right.
And then in the second year, when you adjusted up another percent and a half, it brings them to, what is that, 3.5%?
3.5, correct.
Below, so they're still below market, but they're within the range-
Within the range.
Below market, all right.
Correct.
And how much does that add up to in terms of budget? Do you have any sense of that?
Yeah, that should be on the agenda sheet.
Yeah, it is there.
If it's fully loaded with fringe benefits, the total cost would be $77,352.
For both years, together?
For both years together.
Okay.
For both those classifications.
And then, did we budget for that? Is that increase budgeted, or how are we managing that increase? And I'm looking at Fay.
Yeah, we did not budget it for this year, so we will take it out of existing, our existing budget.
Okay, so that's, looks like it's about $38,000 this year that you would need to actually adjust some things within the budget that you have in order to accommodate that?
Correct.
And then next year, it would be part of the budget discussion that we have moving forward.
Correct, we would make that request as part of the budget process.
Okay, all right, so those are all my questions. Did you have any questions?
Let me, there's only one. I may have had it wrong, but the Me Too you've talked about for insurance, but what about cost of living increase, there's-
Just on the health.
Yes, insurance, okay.
Yes, on the-
I was looking for it and I couldn't find it.
Yeah, just on the health.
That's all I've got.
Okay.
So if I could add just for a second?
Sure.
And Commissioner, you had asked this a little bit earlier, but just to talk a little bit more about who these employees are, I mean, the detention facility is a 24-hour facility, we have 32 beds, and we are housing the highest-risk youth that we have in our community, are the ones that a determination is made, are not going to be released back into the community, they need to be held in detention, so that's a function of a 24-hour facility. Staff are usually there on Christmas and, you know, Thanksgiving and most of the holidays that other folks are regularly having off, we still have to cover those shifts with employees, so just to have people understand that it's a 24-hour facility with a continual movement in and out of different youth that come in and out. And then, the shelter care facility is really a, we have youth that do not need the level of custody of detention, but they do need a more structured environment, they're not able to return home for whatever reason, either they pose a safety risk to the community, or their family is not able to provide the structure for that youth to make sure that what we call a safety plan is in place, to be able to make sure that that youth is not posing a risk to the community, and so, or they have no place to go, and so they're being held in the detention facility, it's a 90-day program, and again, it's that same idea where we have kids there, they leave in the day to go to a work program or to regular school, but we have staff that are there all night and in the morning, and then in the afternoons, and they're providing evidence-based programs and services, as well as just the daily operational kind of get up, make your bed, get ready for school, food, clothing, shelter kind of activities. So I think it's just important to know that, it's part of this discussion, that it's not an 8 to 5 job where you come in and do the work and then go back home again, we have a continual process of staffing, and they're the first-line services to youth, families in our community.
Thank you for that, and I think it's really important for people to understand too, I mean, it's not like, I mean, juvenile is not like adult jail.
Correct.
And so you don't have someone just, I mean, not that people in jail stand around, you know what I'm saying?
Correct.
They're not like standing guard, essentially, there's a lot of interaction with the kids. Can you maybe just describe, I mean, you did briefly, you know, get up, go to school, that kind of thing, but involved in the meals, and in kids that were perhaps in crisis, and, and you know, they're teenagers, a lot, so the emotional kind of roller coaster, and kids that have been perhaps in less than ideal family situations sometimes, so can you just do the nickel version of that, so people that are listening could understand that?
And we also have a number of kids with mental health issues, and some very serious mental health issues. I know we've talked in the Board of Commissioners discussions with the sheriff and other forums around juvenile, and in the budget presentations, we've talked about the juvenile justice system and adult criminal justice system as a default for mental health services, and we certainly see that, where we have a number of kids that actually- that actually should be in a hospital somewhere in another setting and those resources may not be available. And so they're in a twenty-four hour confined, secure facility. And sometimes the bed that may become available goes to a community youth who doesn't have another option versus the youth that are in the facility where the idea is, well, they're in a secure facility and you can provide for your needs within that facility and keep them safe. So we've seen an increase in the number of mental health youth. And frankly, that wasn't what we were set up to do originally. It really was a, a youth correctional kind of detention, um, program. It really wasn't designed to be a mental health services program. But in addition to that, um, we are holding them accountable for the criminal activity. And many of the youth that are in detention are pre-sentenced, so they haven't actually been to court and been convicted or, or admitted to a crime yet. Um, and so they're waiting pending their court hearing. And we also have youth that, um, are, we also have, hold the Measure eleven for Marion County that are the eighteen or seventeen and under Measure eleven youth. We used to house those in the jail, but it took up capacity in the jail, so we've moved them. But the Board of Commissioners made a decision along with the sheriff and myself to move them into the youth, um, into the detention facility, which freed up capacity in, in the jail. But we are looking at providing skills as well, so we're holding them accountable. But we have youth that don't have a lot of skills in many cases. So that's another job is to, almost like a parent trying to teach skills, problem-solving skills. We have an education program. We have mental health services. We have medical staff that we contract for that provide services. So they're, they're basically doing everything that you would do in your own home with a, a youth. But these youth already have some troubles or issues that compound and have brought them to us. And so the staff are the ones that are working alongside of them. And that's why you see there's a higher ratio than there is in the jail, because the staff are expected to work alongside them and hold them accountable, but also do a lot of redirection, a lot of programs and services to help them with their problem-solving, skill development, processing, education.
Communication skills.
Communication. How do you ask for what you want?
Right.
What got you here? How can we work with you to help you not?
How do you ask nicely for what you want?
Correct. And not, you know, ask for it instead of just throwing a fit or getting angry. There's a process of how you can get what you need and we're gonna help do that. Along with just feeding meals, making sure their medical needs are taken care of, getting them to school, um, providing for their exercise. And, and that's similar with the kids in the shelter care. It's just not in a structured, um, secure facility. It's a staff-structured facility. It's not a locked facility, but the staff are there, um, one-on-one with the youth, um, working with them every day. And it's a difficult job. I mean, it's a, and we have staff that do it very well, so.
And the kids are not always confined in a locked cell?
Correct.
I mean, they're out in just, in the general area if they're not outside going to school or whatever.
Correct, yes.
Okay, very good. Did you have anything you wanted to add on that? All right, I think we thoroughly then had a discussion on this contract. Any further?
I did one little question, and I should know this, but like how many, what's a minimum staffing levels? Number of employees? I was just trying to figure out how you, how you manage the shifts.
Well, in the, um, and I don't have the exact numbers for the BRS. The shelter care program is a behavior rehabilitative services funded, Medicaid-funded program. And so there's an actual, to be a certified program, there's an actual staffing pattern that we have to adhere to. Um, and then in detention, we have roughly a one to eight, uh, during the day and then one to sixteen, uh, in the evening.
There's two or three typically on, onsite each shift?
Correct, and we have thirty-two youth, so. But we also, but also in detention, we have the central operations. So we have somebody who's in the central, some people notice a control, central control, like you would see in a, in a youth correctional facility or a jail, who operate all the doors and manage all the security kind of things around monitoring the radios. And then we have an intake unit. So we have staff that staff the intake unit as well as staff that staff the twenty-four-bed, uh, unit. The intake unit, um, processes all the youth that come in that the police bring in or parole, uh, OA parole probation staff bring in or our probation staff bring in, as well as, um, the eight-bed, um, Sierra Unit, we call it, which is, uh, comprises our thirty-two beds. We have a twenty-four-bed unit and an eight-bed unit. So they're not all in one spot. They, we've got like three different locations where we have staff.
All right, well, Madam Chair, I would like to move the recommendation that we do ratify the MCJEA contract for two thousand twelve to fourteen.
And I will second the motion and also thank you both. And I know you had a team of people working together to, uh, get this contract put together and ratified by the employees. And I think it's a, it's a good piece of work, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much.
So all in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. So Rod, we've been through all the hard questions, so you just get to come up here and clean up.
Shall we see if he answers the same way or?
Right, exactly.
Repentancy?
So our second item is to consider ratification of the Marion County Oregon Nurses Association, or ONA, collective bargaining agreement. It's also effective July one, twenty-twelve through June thirtieth, twenty-fourteen. And we have Gary Rubello gets to stay in the hot seat and then Rod Colkins is joining him, uh, Health Department Administrator. So good morning. Maybe we could start out, Rod, with, uh, having you talk about what the nurses do and how many and so on are in your, in your unit. And, uh, then we could move into what the contract is.
Okay, the, the first thing I want to say is that the Oregon Nurses Association represent about, uh, twenty nurses, professional nurses within the Health Department. It's the only, uh, department in which we have ONA-represented individuals. And, um, this includes, um, two nurse practitioners and the rest are public health nurse, registered nurses. Many of our nurses on the behavioral health side are contract, uh, employees, um, that, uh, especially on the nurse practitioner that do psychiatric prescribing. Those are mainly, uh, contract employees. Those are not covered by this agreement. So what nurses do, um, they're basically the medical staff of, for the Health Department. We do have some physicians. We have a health officer, as you know, Dr. Landers. But the, uh, nurses are the ones who carry out a function such as, um, working with babies who are born with, uh, severe developmental challenges or medical challenges through our Babies First or Cocoon Program. And they also work in the, um, sexually transmitted infection HIV program, uh, women's health, tuberculosis, immunizations, and of course, the surveillance and prevention of, uh, the spread of communicable disease. So those are the, the roles they function. There are quite a few of them. And, uh, we're, we're lucky to have a, a very talented staff. And, uh, a lot of folks who have worked here for many, many years, uh, noticed that one of our nurse practitioners, we're giving her a thirty-year award at our next, uh, all-staff meeting.
So if I could add to that, um, I know when I was in the legislature in two thousand one, there was a lot of discussion about a national shortage of nurses and, and the state of Oregon difficulty getting enough nurses. So, and I know when Marion County, we've had some struggle too in the sheriff's office at the jail, getting people to serve in that role. So you're talking about we've had people that are skilled and have been here for a long time. Do we still have a, I mean, is there still a nursing shortage generally in, in Oregon?
I think you could answer yes to that. I think there's more nurses, uh, coming out of school. We do have some folks who've been with us a very short time. Some of our recruitments over the last couple of years have actually taken quite a while. Some have gone, uh, more quickly. I think that the latter is a reflection of the economy more than anything else.
Okay, thank you. So Gary, you want to walk us through the contract? And maybe we could do the same as we did last time, just talk about the, um, those tweaks that were made to language and then go through the, the important points that changed.
Yeah, again, uh, this is, uh, probably one of our shorter contracts in terms of articles. There's only about twenty-four articles. Uh, there was quite a bit of language cleanup. We did, seven of the articles were approved and TA'd, um, tentatively agreed.
Tentatively agreed, okay.
Tentatively agreed.
All right, thank you.
Has, uh, uh, current contract language, so there were no changes there. Again, similar to what we discussed on MCJEA, we looked at language cleanup, uh, um, making it a little bit more generic, trying to, where we could make it more consistent with other contracts per the LGPI study, uh, the Local Government Personnel Institute study. So we did those kind of things and those are usually reasonably easy, um, you know. You have some discussion on, uh, travel reimbursement, um, you know, those type, those, those type of changes. From a economic standpoint, uh, we had the exact same arrangement with ONA that we did with MCJEA on the health premium caps, that they stay at thirteen forty-six for the two years, but they also have the same me-too, um, uh, agreement. And I didn't say it upfront, but this is not a strike-prohibited group. This, this group is strike-eligible. They're one of the, along with MCA, there are only two strike-eligible bargaining units. We did the same type of market review study going into this contract and, um, especially it was important here because the nurses had not been looked at within that five-year cycle that you had referenced earlier. And when we looked at that, the public health nurse two and three were seven percent behind market. And, uh, nurse practitioners, there's only two of them, but they were, uh, just a hair over eleven percent behind market. Uh, we also had two employees in the, uh, we have a mental health nurse one and two. And those two mental health nurses were in really good market shape. One was about eight percent above market and one was behind market, about one and a half percent. So what we determined is that mental health nurses were fine as they were. And to get, um, to put the public health nurses into market, we agreed to do a four percent one-time market adjustment effective August fifth. There's no other, uh, pay changes negotiated in the contract. Nurse practitioners, because they were so far behind, uh, we negotiated an eight percent correction. That would get both, all of those classifications well within the zero to five percent, uh, market guideline that we have. One other economic change we made is very slight and, and this is kind of an inconsistency in the ONA contract. When they, uh, Rod mentioned that, uh, uh, the nurses do communicable disease work and sometimes that work requires them to give vaccinations or medication on the weekend. So if somebody has TB, typically they're somewhat isolated. The nurses come in on the weekend. And the way it was working before, they would only get paid for actual time work. So, um, uh, they'd come in, it would take maybe fifteen, twenty minutes to administer, uh, the dosage and that's what they would get paid for. And they felt to give up time on their weekend to get, come in, that they should have some kind of a, a, a guarantee of minimum hours. So what we decided to do was to use the call, we have a callback pay provision in the contract that if you're called back off-shift, you're guaranteed a two-hour minimum of work. And we decided to apply that rule to the weekend work. So that if they come in on the weekend to administer dosage for communicable disease, uh, patient, that they would, uh, be paid for a minimum of two hours of work. And we felt that was fair and, and it's pretty consistent with other contracts as well. The only other change, um, they had a letter of agreement for comp credit opt-outs and all other contracts have comp credit opt-outs in the contracts. All we did was move that language from an LOA, Letter of Agreement, into the contract, same as all the other contracts, so. And there was also quite a bit of discussion around training for, uh, the nurses. The current contract is very vague in terms of what we're gonna do for training. So, um, I, it's probably our, one of our most discussed topics in the contract, actually. And what we agreed to is that we would make every good faith effort to meet a minimum hours of training for the nurses, forty hours for the nurse practitioners and twenty-four hours per year for the other nurses. And we reviewed all the training that we're currently doing and we're essentially at that threshold now. So it really is a commitment to essentially maintain the training, but do it in a more, uh, precise manner in terms of, uh, how much training they're gonna get in a year and make sure that we're more consistent on how we deliver that training across all the nurses. So we'll be tracking that, monitoring that, reporting on that, making sure that, uh, the nurses get the training that they need to stay, stay qualified in their field.
So I have a few questions. Rod, so you mentioned at the outset, and actually someone asked me this not too long ago, so this is, was really interesting to me. So you, I see that the market, uh, numbers at the, on the write-up are for public health nurse two, public health nurse three, and nurse practitioner. And then Gary mentioned that the, there's a mental health nurse one and two.
Right.
And that those were within market and they weren't changed. But then you said that those positions are contracted, quote-unquote. So could you describe a little bit what you meant by that?
The, the two that Gary were talking about are the exception to the contract for behavioral health. Most of the behavioral health, uh, nurse practitioners are, well, all of the mental health nurse practitioners are contract employees.
And how, how is that, how does that work? How is that different from what we do with the others?
It, it's something of, um, it relates to kind of, uh, what the expectations of people in the field are, that, uh, folks who have gone back and, uh, obtained their psychiatric nurse, uh, practitioner's license, generally look for work on a contract basis. And so, uh, if we looked at our current salary scale, including benefits and things like that, it's not what they're looking for because they're usually here for a day to, um, four days a week. And so with that mix, a, a salary scale doesn't look very attractive, uh, to most folks because they have employment elsewhere and they're, uh, they have a variety of employment arrangements. So it, it's just, um, something of a quirk of the, of the way that the field, uh, employs, uh, nurse practitioners on the behavioral health side versus the public health side where most folks are employees.
Do they work as independent contractors or are they under some umbrella or generally?
They work as independent contractors and, uh, we basically do provide, uh, medical malpractice insurance to cover folks.
All right, that's interesting. Because someone had a friend who, who, you know, wanted to know if they were in this union. And I said, you know, I don't know, I've only heard public health. So that's very interesting. Uh, second question, just to make sure that we've covered it, is that, um, there is a budgetary cost to the four percent one-time for the public health nurse positions and the eight percent one-time for the nurse practitioner positions. And it's, so this would actually take place in this current year budget, because you said it's effective this month, right?
Right.
Uh, and it's sixty thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. So does that come out of your budget? How did we figure that out?
It will be coming out of our, uh, department savings for this year.
Out of department savings, okay. And then next year would be?
We will have to figure out how to cover it because, uh, we need, most of the money that supports that, uh, that program comes from, uh, fees we collect, uh, some state funding and, uh, then County General Fund.
Right. And I wanted to spend another just little minute on the compensation credits, because we talked about it in the last item. But we really didn't talk about the, now, the compensation credit process, I think, came about in the eighties, nineties? Early nineties, maybe?
Early nineties, Madam Chair, I believe.
Yeah, right. And so it was called pay or play, if I recall, way back when. And so employees could determine whether or not they wanted to take extra vacation days or whether they wanted to take those days in salary. Is that?
And, and that was in lieu of a cost of living increase at the time.
Right. And then overtime, I think it started out maybe one week and then, and then it expanded to several weeks, depending on which bargaining unit you were in. And so we had some department audits a few years back, one of them being in the sheriff's office, uh, which is strike-prohibited also, where, uh, the auditor determined that the compensation credit system was really becoming problematic, that there were, um, that we, that the amount of overtime that we were paying was increasing exponentially because people would take time off for, for their compensation credits and then someone else would have to cover that time. And so they'd get overtime for covering that time. And, uh, so, and then the other part is that it sort of, um, understates what the real salary is because the, the assumption, as you talked about, was that the compensation credits factor in a salary, whether or not you take it as vacation time. So then the stated amount of salary when you're advertising the position is really lower than what the actual benefit is. I recall ten years ago or so when we were recruiting for a position in another department and, uh, the person didn't think that they were gonna be able to make ends meet. And it was like, well, wait a minute, you get these three weeks of compensation credits. You have to add all this money and then it's kind of offline and it's not real transparent. So I think we made a determination as a board that we wanted to bring that back into more, here's your vacation weeks and here's your salary. And your salary really is what it says it is. And hence, what we did was we set a date certain and everybody that was hired before that date got to keep a certain amount of compensation credits. And the new employees, as they come in, just have salary and, and vacation. So what you talked about was the, um, that for this particular bargaining unit, that never went into the contract. It was a letter, right, of agreement. And now it's actually in the contract.
Right, the opt-out clause, um, was in a letter of agreement that's saying you have a one-time opportunity to opt out of comp credits and take it as regular pay. to opt out of comp credits and take it as regular pay. So you would have, you know, pay throughout the year as opposed to the comp credits and...
And so that was for the employees that were hired prior to the date when we started the new system.
Right, right. So all we did was, I, and I, and I really can't speak to why it was a letter of agreement, why it wasn't originally in the contract, but that language in that letter of agreement is in every other contract and we just moved it over. Didn't change the wording at all.
Okay. So anything I misstated on compensation credits that you wanted to correct me on?
There, there are a couple additional points, Madam Chair. One is that due to certain IRS regulations, it's really not feasible or appropriate to have that kind of a pay or play situation now because of potential negative tax consequences. So that's one of the reasons why it was phased out in addition to issues regarding backfilling in certain 24-hour operations. So now it is, all new employees, regardless of which unit that they're in or whether they're unrepresented, do not get that, it's just part of their base salary. So the people who did have compensation credits who were hired before...
I don't remember the date.
2009, eight or nine? Those people were allowed to keep it, grandfathered in, or they can choose to opt out and go on the, what they call the K-play pan, uh, pay plan, which includes it, it's a higher base rate. The other aspect of compensation credits was a couple of years back when the county made a decision to pick up the PERS contributions, there was a, a rollback in giving up one week of the compensation credits in exchange for the county picking up the PERS contribution. So those are two aspects. That's why there, there are fewer compensation credits now and fewer people have them.
Right. July 1, 2008 is what it says in Article 7, page 9 of 31, top of 10 of 31. So thank you, that was really interesting. I don't think I ever picked that up, so the tax ramifications of it. Very good. So, any questions, comments?
I do have a comment.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I think I'll just go ahead and make it. I, my granddaughter has used these services, infant granddaughter, and I just got to tell you that people that come out have been so helpful. I'm not critical of anybody, I try not to be, but the other recommendations through the doctor's offices haven't been so successful, but every time that, that these people come out, it's, it's helpful and they look forward to it, and of course compassionate and caring comes through too, so.
Mm-hmm.
They do a great job out there in some pretty difficult circumstances.
Right. Yeah, I think it's important, I mean, Fay talked about the kinds of issues that the group workers deal with and juvenile. Health department employees, they're going through this extensive credentialing process and the nurses are right in the middle of that, right? And, and just had then a department, Oregon Department of Human Services, was it Health Authority?
Health Authority.
Health Authority, right. Review and audit. So Rod, can you fill us in just a little bit on, on that and how it relates to these positions and what they have to do?
Yes, I, I think that there's the professional credentialing that all the nurses have to maintain, and I think that's one of the issues that brings up the importance of ongoing training and continuing education units. I want to point out that the numbers that Gary was talking about, that, that we, we settled on in terms of trying to provide 40 units of, of training to nurse practitioners, for example, they're required to have 100 every two years. So we're not covering all their, all their continuing education requirements to maintain their license. And that they do on their own time and, and at their own expense, the remainder of it. I think the other thing that we do is we have reviews by the Oregon Health Authority and, and other places as well. Some of our accreditations for, like methadone, obviously, comes from an outside agency, CARF, Committee on Accreditation of Rehab Facilities, which is coming up again. And when one of those reviews come by, and they look at a couple of different things. They look at the fidelity of our programs to what are evidence-based practice, practice rooted in science that, that have been demonstrated to be good health practices. And they also look at adherence to Oregon statutes and rules, and those are, are quite extensive and it's, it's very easy to get tripped up. And when you have a review like we just had that came out looking very good, you feel like, wow, that's, that's really neat. People have really been attending to not only the caring and compassionate, which is kind of job one, but also making sure we do it appropriately under the, the guidelines that Oregon establishes.
So a really strong team of people working in public health. And I think, I mean, public health is, we always say it's one of the best-kept secrets, right? But I mean, people rely on it extensively and don't realize, you know, if it were gone, they would realize how much they rely on it, but because it's just there and it's working really well, they don't always notice it. But whether it's working with communicable diseases or going out and trying to track down, you know, the, the infamous salad bar incident, you know, that happened way back when, or bioterrorism types of things, when, you know, they're, I mean, nurses are involved in working with, with babies and working with people that have substance abuse issues, working with just all kinds of different folks in the, in the community and trying to keep, keep all of these various diseases that we have in the community away, so through immunizations, through other programs, so that people are healthy. So it's just a really, really important program that we have.
And if people want to learn more, they can follow us on Facebook and Twitter now.
Oh, well, that, you're in the social media world, that's wonderful. Okay, well, this again, I think it's a very good piece of work, want to thank you and the team that worked on, on this contract, and thank the nurses for ratifying it. Ready for a motion?
I am. You know, me, I always wander a little bit, but, so I won't, I won't do that.
No, go ahead, wander, we have time.
No, I'm just saying there's still swine flu and bird flu out there to...
Yeah, I was reading about that.
Just, just so Rod remembers.
I was looking for Oregon and it didn't say, it doesn't sound like there's many cases in Oregon.
We have not had the cases of the swine flu that other places are seeing. There's four or five states.
Actually, if you saw where they're spreading, it's county fairs and state fairs.
Yeah, because of the peaks, right.
And actually, it's contact with swine.
Anyway, I'm getting off-subject as usual, but Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we ratify the Oregon Nurse Association contract for 2012 to 14.
Second the motion. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That contract is also ratified. Thank you again very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate, appreciate the dialogue that we had this morning. I think it's important for people who are following what the county does to really understand why it is that we're doing what we're doing, so.
Agreed.
Even though we've had many meetings about this before in, in executive session and also in other forums, I think it's important to have that full discussion here. So there are no public hearings this morning, that was our last action item. So I will read the Wednesday to Wednesday calendar, make sure I got on the right side here. This is where two or three commissioners will be present. We just completed our board session here on Wednesday, August 15th. Tomorrow morning, Thursday, August 16th, from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. is the City of Salem, Marion County Breakfast Meeting. That's held at McGrath's Restaurant at 350 Shemekah Street in Salem. On Monday, August 20th, at 8:30 is the Board of Commissioners Calendar Review. That's held in the Columbia River Conference Room, 451 Division Street Northeast in Salem. That will be followed from 9 to whenever it gets over, but we've scheduled it till 11 by management update, in the Columbia and Saniam River Conference Rooms, also on 451 Division Street Northeast in Salem. On Tuesday, August 21st, from 10:00 to 10:30 is a Marion County Housing Authority Meeting in the Columbia River Conference Room in Salem. And then on Tuesday, the 21st, from 3:30 to 5:00 is a work session. The title of that work session is Public Works: Policies and Procedures in Agriculture Use in Marion County. And that will be held over at the 451 Division Street Northeast Columbia and Saniam River Conference Room. So those are the conference rooms on the second floor of the MAPS Administration Building, if anyone is interested. And then our board session, our regular Wednesday board session, will be next Wednesday, August 22nd, at 9 o'clock here in the Commissioners Boardroom at 1115 Commercial Street Northeast in Salem. So what interesting things do you have to report on?
Let's take care of the weather first. I smelled fall for the first time this morning, was a fog bank came in, so that delights me. And we do have some really hot days coming. On a, it's not on the list, but Monday I'm going to Almsville to look at a, you know, I've been pushing, or the county has actually, the Reading for All and Reading Programs, where they've really kind of excelled in a summer reading program. They, they wind it up today and asked that I come, so I'm looking forward to that. And in our meeting with, State Breakfast Meeting, Harold White was talking about how successful it's been, and, so that ought to be a good one. And otherwise, it's kind of a quiet time, but I like that.
Well, also, it wasn't on the list, but on Tuesday, August 21st, at 1 o'clock, I believe, is a healthcare forum. Rod is gone, I was going to confirm it with him, and it's at the Salem Conference Center. Senator Jackie Winters is organizing it, and I'm going to be on a panel along with several other people that have been working in the Coordinated Care Organization. So if people are interested in learning more about healthcare, they're welcome to come to that forum. And I'm sure there is information on the web or they can call the board office and get more information on it.
I keep getting emails on it, so apparently they're interested, but see if, see if they come.
I'm getting a few emails too, so I'm sure people are still interested in that. So I was gone last week, was I gone, have I been gone for two weeks?
Seems like forever, but go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. Went to Boston and New York to help our son move, move out there. Our son, our daughter-in-law, and our two grandchildren, two of our three grandchildren. So we got to be in, it wasn't, I was really worried, speaking of the weather, because I, we lived in Boston for three years when my husband went to law school way back when in the 70s. I just remember summers in Boston were no fun. They were hot, muggy. I mean, you know, you get, even in the 80s, I mean, you can be in the 90s here and you're really hot, but there's, the humidity is so much less than it is there. And it was in the 80s, it wasn't unbearable, so we survived it. But we did have a chance to go down to New York City and went on a tour that they called the Freedom Tour, and had a chance to take a look at the, where they're building the new buildings in the World Trade Center area where they have the reflecting ponds, pools, they call them the gargantuan, great big rectangular pools with water rushing on all sides, but they have the names, I think 3,000 names of people who perished in that, in the 9/11, and, and all the different sites, I believe, they have that in there. Plus, I think they added the names of people that were in the other bombing of the World Trade Center. The museum wasn't open yet, but, and the building isn't completed yet, but it was really very moving to be there. And then they have a big wall, a fireman's wall, that has the names of all of the firefighters that passed away in, in the, in the aftermath of that event, which was also very impressive. So we had a chance to go there, had a chance to go to upstate New York and take a look at some things that relate to our church, and then went out to Boston, spent five hours in, I probably shouldn't name brand names on CCTV, but a particular furniture store. They had a tax-free weekend, so they, Massachusetts has a sales tax, and they had a moratorium on their sales tax for two days.
Well, you timed that nicely.
And it was horrendous, the number of people that were there. I mean, I'm sure if they didn't have a sales tax at all like Oregon, it would spread out, it wouldn't be as bad, but everybody was trying to buy, you know, it was up to $2,500, so it wouldn't have been like cars and things.
Doesn't sound civically responsible.
Right.
They all planned their purchases by those days.
But you know, if you're buying, you know, a couch or, you know, furniture, bed frames, dressers, that kind of thing, and you can save quite a bit of money, you know, for not having to pay the sales tax. Made me proud that in Oregon, we don't have a sales tax.
No plays, no baseball.
Uh, we, no, my, this is a long story, probably don't want to tell it here, but our youngest son went with us. He had a different flight than we did, so he didn't have to leave until about 5 o'clock yesterday afternoon. We had to leave at 10:30 in the morning, so he and my, the son that's staying in Boston went to Fenway and did a tour yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
Their pictures, their pictures are posted on Facebook, they had a great time. There weren't any games going on. In fact, he said they were setting up for a Bruce Springsteen concert at the, there, so I could have stayed for that.
I'm going to come around back to the weather and things, but I've been laughing at my kids a little bit. You know how they kind of pawn stuff off, that you store it forever until they want it?
Yeah, I've got like about 14 boxes up in my attic.
Do you have that too? Well, suddenly, I'm supposed to dig out fans and a, and a window air conditioner, suddenly my responsibility to get it.
Right.
How does that happen?
Yeah, I ended up shipping the car seat down to California when this, when the grandbaby was born.
Let's put our foot down.
Yeah.
We'll have a parent responsibility free two days or something.
Yep. Sounds good. I don't think it ends. I don't think you can have a moratorium on that, like you can't, like a weekend sales tax.
But you can call sales tax off, like you can't, all right.
Yeah. So Gloria, anything you want to add for the, for the good of the order here?
Nothing in particular. Having grown up in New Hampshire, I'm well familiar with the muggy and buggy summers, and that is the only state, I believe, that does not have a sales tax other than Oregon.
Right. We sat next to a gentleman from New Hampshire on our last leg into Boston, and he was very proud of living in New Hampshire. That was great. All right, well, I think that's everything, so...
And more.
So with that, we will adjourn.